We think that you always have an ear to just hear us and grant us your presence in these meetings. I can attest that your spirit has helped us through many situations. We just thank you for your spirit that's here and we pray that whoever sits in these chairs will understand the importance of having your presence here. Once again, thank you for everything that you've done for the city of Fort Payne and your hand is over it. We continue to bless our city. Pray in Jesus' name.
Joe May, please believe this with a flag. Attention.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here. We've got pretty full house tonight. We'll call meeting order with all members present. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion from red, second from red, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Report from the officers. Tim?
On the crosswalks that we talked about, there's gonna be three of them around the middle school and then they actually want two on Skyline. No, we're not. Actually, on Skyline, it won't be crosswalks. It'll be just the speed control, which will be the center of the one we built on the alley.
The new ladder?
Yeah. Yeah, it's got a speed table.
Right, exactly.
That's what it's called. So the ones on Stadium Drive both will be speed tables with the crosswalks on top. And also, Martin Avenue, they want one there, but it's not as critical. Mr. Cunningham said they would pay for it if y'all wanted to. Those and then the one on Skyline are just be, the ones on Skyline's only gonna be the speed tables. If y'all want us to go ahead and do those now, and then I noticed the aisle has got their sidewalk built. So I'm assuming they're ready for it.
Yeah, I talked to them today as I re-activated and they asked us if we could go ahead.
Does that, sidewalks ain't little close to the street?
To you?
Little bit.
I honestly did not even see-
It's on the street, basically connects to the street, what it looked like to me. And I thought, well, maybe some handrails, then you got cars running over handrails. So, I don't know. We need to, I don't know what we need to do, if there's anything we can do to make that a little safer, but that looks... I'm a little nervous.
If we could push some hash in or something towards the end of the sidewalk. Is that what you're talking about, just afraid people walk right out?
Well, I mean, they're gonna be walking, I mean, it is connected to the road. It's not off the road. It's connected right into the vapor. Sidewalk that runs parallel to the street is.
Oh, oh, oh.
Most of the time, we get, we've got those now, but they'll be on top of the curb. So you got a separation of the curb, but there it has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
There's no curb or anything to keep the car from running right up on it?
The same way to put a curb, where are they? Same level of the street.
Do you think we can back it up?
I don't know.
They could put a curb.
I don't know. I just, I looked at it. I drive by it just about every day and it concerned me, I'll just be honest with you.
They could put a, it wouldn't be a normal curb, but it could be a hump that could serve as a curb if they wanted to.
I'll talk to them about that.
You got a lot of young drivers on that street? And I don't know, I just think it's something that somebody needs to bring to their attention that I think is a little bit unsafe.
How wide is the sidewalk? Four foot?
Four feet, yeah, I think so.
All right, y'all wanna go ahead and receive those? Y'all wanna hold up on them or how do you want to handle that?
The high one, I think we need to just go ahead and move ahead with it a few guys.
I think we had already approved the high one, had we not, at the last meeting? I think we had already given okay to the high crosswalk.
The other way, the question is whether we're gonna pay for it. How much is it?
Uh, they're roughly about $700 with these, counting the table and the painting.
So $2,100?
Yeah, for the school. I last seen you today, I don't know ideas on the regular flights. The ones on Skyline is a cut through. And I thought we were gonna be able to stop one end of it, but
What kind of funds could we pull that from? Is there some tax money or anything we can use since it's on the road? You know, we've talked about trying to help the schools as much as we can. Maybe this is something we can do for them.
We were looking at the Highway Traffic Safety Funds earlier. We're sure we could use those for crosswalks.
Well, I would think for the speed control anyway, I would think without, you know, nothing else but the speed.
Well, the crosswalks are included in that.
Right, right.
I'd like to say, if we could pay for it, if we can find the money to do it, you know, we've talked about trying to help the schools as much as we can when we can, so.
I'll make a motion approved.
Motion from red, second from Walter. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is only on the school crosswalks.
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, the crosswalk lights, flashing lights, we got those installed today. The town of Valley Head wants us to do some paving for them. So I don't know if, that's been done in the past. I don't know if y'all charged them labor and I told them I'd just have to check with you guys and see how y'all do that. There won't about, it's gonna be almost a mile of paving done in the city. So it's gonna be roughly $45,000 in material costs. And they said they had about $50,000 for it. So if we, if we're gonna charge them labor, we'd have to back that out, but I don't know how y'all would handle that.
What do you expect the labor would be, Tim?
Uh, it's gonna be two days for the whole crew, so 13 folks. So probably roughly $1,500 a day, so about $3,000.
Does that include us, Holland?
Yeah, we got, yeah, that includes the Holland too. 13 folks, that's what it took.
And that includes the Holland of that small?
Yeah.
$1,500 a day?
Yeah, something roughly.
That sounds kinda cheap, maybe including Holland.
I mean, that's just labor. That's not counting our benefit package. If we count it, we'd have to count it at 25 an hour.
You said the needs of them?
Forty-five.
I think you probably are required to at least recover if you call.
I think we need to at least recover our expenses.
Do material, well, they'll pay for the materials and then we'll add some labor in, bill them for the labor then.
But benefits and all?
Yeah, all of them.
Yeah, it needs to be up, it needs to be up, come Washington. Where is it up there they're on the pavement, do you know?
Fourth Street and Third Street. That's half them. They're roughly a half, a half mile of these.
Tim, have you heard anything about them paving between, I think something that I mentioned to you at a meeting, some of you guys in a work session we had, about paving between Valley Head sign and overpass there on 11th?
Yeah, I talked with the thing to live better and that's in the works.
Yeah.
Probably gonna be the start of paving season next year.
He told, he told me it might be as early as his fall, but probably in the spring, so it's on the list now, so.
I talked to him this week and they considered it probably the start of paving season next year that they're gonna complete the reserving on 11th where they left off this time.
Oh, Valley Head Road or Iowa?
Iowa.
Iowa 11th.
I meant Hammond, yeah, the half. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
In their budget, I've got in there for a wheel excavator, which is great all. Well, the state's got one there and they've been holding it in order for us to try to buy it when we can. They got, they think they're gonna have a price between $35,000 and $40,000. But the problem is, they've gotta release it tomorrow and then our budget won't be passed for a while. Is there any way we could go in and get that and put it on next year's budget or is that allowed?
What's do you have in that funding money?
Uh, there should be $56,000 more of that FEMA coming in. It hasn't all got here yet. There should be $56,000 more of it.
We have enough funds to pay for it.
Isn't that, isn't that one thing we talked about using that FEMA money for? Was that, I don't know, when we had our budget meeting, we talked about using that FEMA money?
Yeah, either for that or the vacuum sweeper.
Right, exactly, yeah.
We kinda went back and forth with each one. If we could use the FEMA money for it and go ahead and get it would be great, because they bought a new one. It's $180,000 in. We think we'll be able to get it for point 30, $40,000.
That would give you a firm price yet?
Uh, he said it'd be less than, less than 40, but he thought it would be 30. But he couldn't confirm it yet until they actually put it on the website.
This is something you guys had on your budget worksheet that you were already gonna recommend?
Well, it's something we talked about, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and we knew we had the FEMA money left over and that's kinda what we talked about doing with, either that or the sweepers. But if this is a kind of a push, you know, then this may be the way we wanna go.
We could pay for it with general fund runs and then do the FEMA money came down to retirement.
Motion from Johnny?
I'll second.
Second from red, on Mr. Reddall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. That's all I got. Appreciate it.
Now, let me get Valley Head, let me get Valley Head straight in my mind. Another city is asking us to pave their streets for? That, so they got more streets, right? Are we gonna, are we gonna be contracted to do all their streets or?
Oh, they just got two now.
Why didn't we just get a contractor to do it that China?
Oh, I don't know. Uh, they said that we had done that before, it's for, I can't, so I don't know.
We have in years past.
We don't, we're gonna get in the business of doing that, I wanna be sure that we're clearing a little bit on it. I mean, how we talk about that, but I'd like to know that we're not, you know, we're not undercutting somebody else that can do the work for them and just give them a cheaper price.
The purpose won't us do it, 'cause we're cheaper than a contractor would.
Because somebody had a job.
Ah, you're exactly right.
We started doing this for other cities, so we might wanna consider-
We can range out.
Yeah, we can, if we're gonna get in that business of paving, we bought this equipment to pave our streets, not other city streets, so.
Yeah, if we get all of them in the county, that's all we're gonna be doing.
That's all we're gonna be doing, so, oh, well, this, you know. I don't mind helping out in an emergency situation. This is just a normal paving of a road, right? I think we need to be careful, y'all. I mean, I think we're gonna be real careful on that. That's, that's, man, it's not a good idea to compete with other paving companies. It's probably gonna be a whole lot lower, I'm thinking, if we did it than them going to somebody else. And I like to know how much lower that's gonna be, because I don't want anybody coming up and saying, you guys are undercutting us and that's what we'll be doing. I say, I don't think we should do it. That equipment is bought for the city for pain, for our roads.
Sounds good to me.
I don't think, I think we need to, of course, I'm not gonna be here to fuss with them, so just recommending, we think seriously about that. Rocky, you got anything you wanna chime in on that? I mean, you know.
I think, Rocky, main thing he said was if we would be required to recover our costs. Maybe that's something, how big a hurry are they in on this? Maybe we need to talk about this.
I think cost plus. The only thing I heard is, is it, it sounds like this is the only way, if they've got $50,000 to do it and it's gonna cost $50,000 for a pain to do it, this is the only way they're gonna get it done. They're not gonna be able to go contract and do it. But as far as legally, as long as we don't lose money, it's another governmental entity. We couldn't go do it for a private entity, but it's another governmental entity and there's nothing illegal about it. If we did decide to do it, we'd need to make sure we cover wire and tire with the machine. Yeah, wire and tire machine, yeah. I mean, that's actual cost, you know, it'd be-
Yeah.
Because you know how it starts, right? Will y'all help us? Can y'all help us next year?
And then everybody else, every other town, same thing, so.
I hope we do it this time. I think we ought to have an understanding that this is a lifestyle we're gonna do. I think we need to- Out of the ordinary. Are they looking for an answer now? Because it's something they wouldn't just thunder a little bit?
Talk about this a little bit and kinda see what the ins and outs or the pros and cons are gonna be.
That's not the only thing we do for that. No, we, we hang lights for them also, or the Christmas lights.
They pay us for that, though, right?
They buy our lunch.
Missed all of them, didn't?
Give me the rest.
Are we kinda- How much you ever missed, boy?
About 18.
Are we kinda in the same boat there, Rocky? Or kinda in the same boat there? I think we all, you know.
That we need to be covering our costs on, on stuff like that. I mean, I understand you wanna help the communities around you and all, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna get in the light hanging business.
Different from the city?
Yeah, yeah.
Schools as opposed to some other?
I mean, but if, I mean, if that's something that we could do and we can do to help them, by all means, I think we gotta cover our costs. Obviously, you're telling me legally we have to. But we probably need to talk about all this and see if that's the business we wanna be in, if that's the character we wanna be in.
We wanna help other entities, but never make sure we wanna-
About putting ourselves in a-
At Fort Payne first. Tim, I wonder what it would cost to pave that footage if you had a contractor do it? Any, any idea? Just rough figure?
Uh, let's say the motion.
Trying to get idea of what we- Tim, I think we're probably just gonna table this for now. We'll talk about it. And there may be some other things we have to get, we, like his license, see what, you know, the cost is on that. Kinda reevaluate what we've been doing there too, so. I would suggest that, so you don't have to discuss it every time like this, that you have, that you develop a policy. We can do this for school boards and we can do this for municipalities, as you say, with the exception of emergencies. Now, I'm not talking about there's a tornado or a storm or anything like that. Everybody does that, everybody thinks that.
If they roughly send about $1,000, if they got a contractor to do it.
They say about $25,000. Do like, do like we do, put it back, say, but you're getting up to do it.
Probably have. They probably have. Well, let's just talk about this at another time.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you have?
I got a list here, Mr. Compton. Of course, I had your building work session. I think it went well. The cop turn, the mayor's cut, the soda went real well. They had good participation. Weather was good. Everything went good with it. You wanna be mentioned, the cop course in good shape. We've got one of our drains that's struggling because of heat. And we're talking about maybe installing some sort of a fan or something over there to do that. It's kind, I don't know, maybe too late in the year to do it now for next year. Splash pad, this weekend was the last weekend for it to be open, so we're in the process now of taking it off. The things down and winterizing it and the city pool, be doing that next couple of days. Uh, we did add 100 cubic yards of safety service to the playground equipment at the Waukegan Park and over the swings in the city park. Uh, we'll thank Tim and these guys for going and picking it up and Danny Freeman and the sheriff's department dropped some inmates to, for us to get it, get it done. And of course, the cop course, everybody kinda shipped in, Margaret Grace people and the cop course people to get that done. And it went real well.
Just a day or so's time too, that was a-
I actually took us about a half a day. If we hadn't had the inmates out, it would've taken us a lot longer. And they've been a really big help on several occasions for us. Uh, I would like to mention, I'd like to go ahead and get in the process. We need to go ahead and do, Hawken Spring Park needs to be done. And this needs to be done too. It's probably gonna take, it may take 200 cubic yards to really do all of those too, they're pretty, they're not good.
I think we probably already got a quote on that amount anyway. That's probably still good, if I had a guess to make.
And the, we've also, I wanted two more waste stations, dog waste stations. One put up at, at the end, at the north end of the Waukegan Park and another one put into the pavilion. We're getting a lot of, a lot of traffic and people are starting to be aware of it and use it, which is, it's been handy.
I think we get some additional use as well.
Additional use, actually, it's kinda helped us out. A lot of people are putting their loaded diapers in there instead of dumping them out of parking lots, so.
It's an added benefit.
That's actually a benefit. I know we met with Game Time and Optimus Club, the Quants Club on addition to the playground equipment at the Waukegan Park. It's a special needs equipment and I know we're working on that. Hopefully, we're gonna have it done before too long. It'll be, I think it'll be a great asset to us down there. Looks like October the 8th and the 9th weekend's gonna be pretty busy in Fort Payne. I know we've got, we've got a youth softball tournament. We'll also have a big event over at the pavilion that Main Street, a bunch is kinda putting on. And I think it's the same weekend as the Fall Festival, but Hallow is gonna use the soccer field. I believe about on that, but it wasn't on this list. Of course, our registration for basketball starts October 3rd. Anything else? Just kicking out lungs.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Mine's pretty brief. We had a really good boom day. Crowd was well behaved and large, both nights. Our officers worked long hours for the play. They did a real good job and the crowd was well behaved. I can't say that enough. We didn't have to make a single arrest. And I'd like to thank Sheriff X for loaning me some deputies, because we were kinda stretched a little bit thin on every event and we had to work. The fun run that morning till, you know, about 11 o'clock Saturday night, he helped me with some deputies and some stuff that the KF did. So I'd like to thank him for that. Other than that, I do have Gerald Engel here from, I guess, the Fort Payne Youth Football Association. And I don't know if you wanna do that in new business, but there's just a formality of maybe closing the roads if we kinda need to go over. So if you wanna wait and do that, or we can do it now, doesn't make any difference to me.
All right, just go ahead and give it.
Okay, let me give you a little background. About the last probably eight to 10 years, they've had a football program. Gerald, you wanna come on up? They've had a little three-week football program and they played a few games out on the practice field for the high school. And it's just been, the roads been closed on those days and done it. And I talked to Gerald. I told him I thought people probably needed to come and make sure the council were aware of this. It's been going on now for about five to 10 years, but I just wanna formalize it, because I guess we as a police department is kinda giving them the authority to close that road when they have games, so they put bleachers out there. So Gerald can tell you a little bit more about it.
We have four home games here. Two of them, Coach Ellis lets us play in the stadium, the other two play on the practice field. So what we've been doing is just calling Randy and saying, hey, we're gonna be closing the stadium road. So we go up to the middle school, pull the gate across and set some barricades up at the three-way stop there, still. So, and we saw the bleachers out there, you know, the kids can come out there and set the sections down up there. So Randy said he thought it'd be a good idea for Randy for you guys, so you can make an official vote on if I close it. What we've been doing is just calling him and, okay, you know.
That's twice a year.
Two times a year.
And it hasn't been a problem?
Well, it can be four times a year, because if we have a rhythm, Randy, Coach Ellis wants one.
Right. But has it been a problem so far?
No.
Yeah, I thought our guys go up and make sure that they have everything blocked off like they're supposed to be, but I just wanted to come forward counseling and kinda get y'all to places with that. We've just kinda done it for the last four, five years and I'm just thinking about it.
Well, Gerald, you're still, you'll still call him when you're gonna do it, though?
Yes, we'll always do that.
I'll make a motion. We do it on a as needed basis and as long as you follow up what you've been doing and get in touch with Randy and the police department.
I'll second it. Motion from red, second, from Johnny. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Don, I apologize for my being here late. He had to talk to the president. Basically, same old thing going right now. We've got the rookie schools getting into full swing. They're getting ready for the hot week in a couple of weeks and everybody's doing good. They had Randy and Matti out here, so it's just turned into a good rookie school. That's how we got it.
How's the new trucks?
Doing awesome.
I appreciate it. Timmy, you have anything?
I don't have anything, but-
Nobody else here?
Okay.
I'll second that motion. Johnny, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, on to business. First thing we have is John Dershowitz who addressed the council. Come on up, John.
Thank you. I brought show and tell this time. I've given each of you, thank you, Mayor, City Council and city employees for having me here today. I've given you each our 2015 economic impact report strictly from tourists. Now, tourism is defined, meaning that somebody has to have spent the night in DeKalb County to be a tourist. Because the entire formula to get to these numbers comes from the fact that they spent the night here. So it starts with the hotel, then it has art and for food, gas, entertainment, shopping, things like that. So last year, and this is exciting, last year tourists spent right at $79 million in DeKalb County. So to put that in perspective from the individuals, a couple of you asked me for my check on the way in. But every family in DeKalb County, all families, per family, would have to pay an extra $272 in taxes to make up that $79 million. So if you didn't have tourists and nobody was coming, $272 just to get to that $79 million. So I greatly appreciate the support that I've gotten from all of you in the past. We had a fan guest today. Biggest ever, which is beautiful. My guys, the crowd is great. People are spending money and we just really had a good time. And I also wanna thank, I have my chairman of the board, Brian Vane here, and the incoming chair, Heather Buckner. And I have Jim McGee here, everybody knows Jim, and Jason Harper is our former chair. And we have some people in the audience that are here, Darlene Roach and others that are supporting that we grow in tourism. And we have been doing that every year. Last year, we were up 5.3%. And we're a very small budget. So on a very small budget, we continue to grow. If we grow more and more every year, and that's why I'm back with you guys this year, to talk about some additional funding. The more we grow, what happens is, the hotel business, they have a formula. When the hotel daily rentals reach a certain percentage when annualized, hotels automatically down. So when they see you hit that 60% and 65% occupancy rate annualized, a new hotel comes. And then when that one is successful, more people come, the restaurants come with it, retail comes with it. Main Street, Beverly Pike is here. Main Street, people wanna open businesses downtown. People wanna have boutique shopping that is good for the visitors. They wanna have restaurants that's good for the visitors, and it's all good for the community. Tourists are not damaging our environment. They're clean, they're clean money. They made their livings elsewhere and they're coming here and spending the money in DeKalb County. And especially in Fort Payne, because Fort Payne is collecting 85% of the tourism dollars.
Where are we now, obviously?
Beg your pardon?
You said they get the 65% they billed.
We're bumping right up against it, because we've already got some hotels that are interested. But we gotta boost across this threshold and we're gonna get some. And that's provided. We gotta make sure that our economy continues to be stable. Because what happens when you get some instability in the economy, then some people start bowing out. But I don't think they will. I think we're in good shape to keep moving forward. This year, we're at 8% growth year-to-date. Unbelievable. We dropped a little bit after school started. We kinda fell out real quick after the world's long yard sale. 5.3% last year. We're up from that this year and I look for that to continue on and growth to continue indefinitely. People love it here. So a year ago, right out of a year ago, I gave my economic impact report for the prior year. And I asked if you guys would increase our percentage of the lodging tax by 1%. And as a result of that request, city, you guys enacted a 2% lodging tax increase. Now, understandably, we talked about Main Street coming and believe me, I am 100% for Main Street. It's a wonderful organization. It's doing well and it will contribute to tourism. So I know Main Street's gonna do well. We're just gonna get more of these hotels and things going on downtown. We have a, I think everybody agreed last year when I presented, that it sounded like a pretty good idea to have some additional funding so we could do more outside advertising. We run a seven-day-a-week operation and it's expensive to operate that business, so we don't have as big an ad fund as we would need to really go out and advertise outside. Now, we do some. We do some radio. We do magazines. We do some even, do some TV. And we try to get interviews on TV as much as possible, and they're free. We try to get magazines to write about us, because then it's free, it's better. You know, when the consumer, when somebody's writing about you and it's not a commercial, then the visitor likes that better. Uh, but it really takes an ongoing ad campaign. And I'm not talking about just one year. You gotta have a plan. So I get discounts through all the big media companies that support tourism. So we have, you know, all these vendors that come to our meetings. So we have, you know, all these vendors that come to our meetings that solicit me to do business. And they give us discounts because we are the state-certified destination marketing organization. So we're the one that is supposed to be collecting the lodging tax and supposed to be reaching out to promote our area so that people come to visit us that do not live here. Sometimes people say, I don't see your ad. Well, we have had it in Times Journal and local magazines too. But our real reach is always outside the town. So you're not going to hear about it quite as much inside. The people that visited for boom days, we had a good out-of-town crowd for boom days in the two-three season every single year. For us to really move to the next level, and we can, we're on the brink with Main Street, with everything going on. We've got new construction in town. We've got new retailers, new restaurants. We're on the verge of making big time happen here. Now, we're not going to ruin our town. It's not going to become Gatlinburg or especially Pittingford or even Branson, Missouri. You know, where it was kind of not planned very well. We'll have a very nicely planned Main Street program with a wonderful tourism environment. People can't wait to get back here. I mean, I travel all over the state. People want to come to DeKalb County. We need a convention hotel because they want to come here for meetings and we can't hold. So what I'm requesting is to think about giving us that one percent of the two percent increase that has now been enforced about a year. So I appreciate it.
Okay.
And you've got the economic impact study. If I can help you with anything on that, I tried to make it as complete as possible. By the way, North Alabama Notland Lakes Tourist Association pays for each of the sixteen counties to have this stuff. But it is the Alabama Revenue Department that compiles these numbers for all sixty-seven counties in the state. So what we did, we take their numbers based on the formula I told you, where you have to start from the motel room. And I put some pretty pictures and stuff in there like that for you.
How much is one percent and two percent?
Well, it's about forty-five to sixty thousand dollars for one percent. The more hotels we have, the more rooms are occupied. When we hit that sixty-five, seventy percent occupancy, the number moves up. Right now, I think Mayor, it's about forty-five thousand dollars for one percent.
Oh, you got the figures on that?
Yeah, we're set to reach about a hundred-and-twenty thousand for a year.
Okay, so then it's sixty for each of the...
And how much are we already?
The two percent is about a hundred and twenty.
You give us one percent. One percent was here.
But it had a, what does it take, something else prior to us passing that lodging tax?
But we didn't ever, we didn't ever...
We were already funding?
Yes, but you didn't allocate it directly to us. You talked about us and maybe Main Street would share that, but you didn't assign it to us. And I think this year you've been accruing it because it just went into effect and...
But what I'm remembering, John, we was funding the tourist association by, was it fifty thousand dollars or so?
Sixty thousand for the alcohol tax.
From the alcohol?
Yeah, and you're still doing it. Now, I'm talking about over...
In addition to that. Okay, okay. That's what I referred to.
We can't give up one to get the other.
He's talking about the one percent that we discussed in the past, but we just never did, never did give it to them.
Mayor's got something over his head. I know he's putting that microphone up, so he's...
Yeah, I just wanted to mention two or three things. Talking about hotel. I do know that there have been, one, it's concerning looking at Fort Payne. The Hampton Inn is increasing by how many rooms?
It's supposed to be adding eighteen rooms.
Eighteen rooms. The convention center is something that we really, really need. That would probably add more to our town than any single thing that we could do. But those, these are very expensive and I am talking to a group about that now. When John talks about the taxes that are collected on the rooms and how all these figures come up with, I don't know any way that we could account for everything else that comes through. I mean, everybody that goes, pulls off the interstate and eats at the Cracker Barrel or what have you, is, they're tourists. They just don't spend the night.
They are, but they're separate. So you're collecting sales tax on all those people. So when they go to the gas station, that's a two-eighteen, and they go to Cracker Barrel, Ruby Tuesdays, you're getting taxed, but they're not a tourist. So those numbers do not include that.
That's right.
It's just that much more.
Unless they go across the street and spend the night.
That's right. Now, if they spend the night in a cabin, a B and B, a campground, that counts too. So all of these, anybody spending the night is paying lodging tax.
Is that in DeKalb or just Fort Payne?
That's everywhere.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. It just happens at Fort Payne, the county gives us two percent for lodging. We get one in Fort Payne. But the county doesn't have as much money. DeSoto State Park is now Fort Payne.
Right.
And the campground and the cabins, all that. So a lot of stuff, even the rental cabins, a lot of them are falling into Fort Payne city limits. So the few things that are in the county don't add a lot to our bottom line.
You want a motel that rains for it and one that's available, that's it.
Exactly, exactly. So I think we've got some of the good things going right now. I appreciate you guys and good luck to everybody
Thank you.
in your election. And I also appreciate the fact that all twelve people running for city council mentioned tourism in their top three most important things to achieve. So I'm here for you. And you guys seen me all over town, so I'm not hurting the pot. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Good job.
God, we consider, like John said, the amount of money that we're getting and all of the parts and pieces that go along with that. I know the chamber also helps out Main Street Tourist Association. There's so many hands, there's so many fingers on the hands. So hopefully, one percent, we got to figure out the whole pot and see how we can divide it up evenly. So I hope we consider that.
Well, John and them just got through with their budget. And of course, this is not included in that budget, I don't think. But it would be appropriate for us to speed up the process a little bit if we could. Or...
Funding?
Funding, yeah.
We're getting pretty close on the budget, I know, so... Okay. Do you want to say something?
I would. This is a separate matter from John. And again, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for letting me come and speak to you all this evening. I've been asked to serve on the Alabama State Parks Partners Coalition Board. And I have handouts as well. I want to take one and pass them around. And this is a letter from the commissioner and parks director where they support this coalition to go out and speak on behalf of the state park system. And John's already given you economic impact for DeKalb County. And of course, Fort Payne now including DeSoto State Park in the city limits. But I'm here on behalf of DeSoto State Park and what it represents to the city of Fort Payne. And you all have probably heard of the park situation over the last few years where they've had to close several of the parks because of the limited funds that they had to operate. And they won't be able to get those parks back up and running again. And they had to cut some hours. And I think that affected DeSoto State Park briefly with some hours cut. And so this coalition is to work with the state. We were fortunate to have Senator Clay Spohfield to sponsor Senate Bill two-sixty, which then passed the House and the Senate. It is now Amendment Two, which will be on the ballot November eighth for everybody to vote on. So what I'm here this evening to ask for then is if you guys would support this coalition by donating a thousand dollars to John's budget, then the tourism board could then put that money out towards advertising. And our coalition is going to be doing the paid advertising. John and others can do all of the social media interaction that doesn't cost anything, which will reach a lot of people. But he himself has already been up here talking about needing additional funding anyway. So he can't do the reach-up that this coalition will be able to do. They've been paid advertising in the state through media, newspapers, digital advertising, radio, different things that we want to do that organizations like John really can't afford to do on their own. So this will be our coalition across the state. We already have over a thousand partners that are working with us. So I'm asking if you guys would give John a thousand dollars so that he can in turn then put that towards us. And with DeSoto State Park, Ken gave me the information that DeSoto State Park's lodging tax, just the city lodging tax alone, sixty-five thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars that came into the city of Fort Payne through lodging tax collected at DeSoto State Park.
During what period of time?
Pardon me?
During what period of time?
Oh, this is for the fiscal year that just ended. So October, September, fifteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen. And so that's the lodging tax. And of course, as John mentioned, that doesn't include the city sales tax. Visitors going to fuel their vehicles up, eating different restaurants, the things that they did in the city of Fort Payne. Spending additional income. So it's important for us to keep this park open. And of course, this one being one of the major attractions for the city of Fort Payne, even though it wasn't always included in the city limits, it was always a major attraction that brought people to Fort Payne and continues to do so.
And this thousand dollars would be, it's to basically fund the advertising program to get this legislature, to get the vote out for this?
For us to educate the voters, to let them know what Amendment Two is so that they don't know what they're voting yes from now on. Of course, we want them to vote yes. So that's why we're going to be advertising, to encourage everybody to vote yes on Amendment Two so that we can support the state parks. And then by voting yes, this will permanently fund the state park system to where they won't ever have to worry, hopefully, in the near future. Anytime in the future, plus this will be constant funding. Money has been taken away from the state parks over the past few years. Even when I retired from Lakeview State Park at that time, the governor had already started taking funds away from the state park system then because the general fund for the state of Alabama needed money and they took it from the state parks. And hence, that was that period of time where we started seeing some of the parks closing or cutting back hours. And of course, employees, they were possibly unsure of, you know, will I have a job tomorrow? So the state parks saw a hit as well with employees jumping ship and taking jobs elsewhere, which of course hindered their operations. You know, take care of the guests. So this would be a security for everybody involved. It will reassure the employees that they have a future at the state park system. It will reassure communities where the state parks are located that their major attraction will continue to operate, put funding into the city, generate jobs in the city, not only at that state park, but the jobs throughout the community across the state park to bring people back to their communities.
Having a state park in our area, I mean, that's a tremendous asset.
I know that the hotels in Fort Payne will tell you that that's one of the major reasons too why they're for, wanting to reach an occupancy level.
I'm glad I'll be able to go through the polls and know what I'm voting for. Vote yes for Amendment Two.
Vote yes on Amendment Two, exactly. So that's what we're here for. And we would appreciate your support if you could agree to see a way to give John a thousand dollars so that the tourism office could then in turn support this.
First, just to go ahead and agree to that to, 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 somewhere else. I think that's very important.
I can make a motion to do that.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. We appreciate this. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. And thank you to you and Dana and whoever else is leaving and has decided to leave the election. Appreciate your contributions. Just seeing you, which you guys have done.
You too.
How soon you need this?
Well, having a commitment right now is great, but yes, tomorrow, because we have to start... Right, we have to have, we have to start advertising the whole month of October. We will hit advertising hard across November eighth's election. So we have to really make everybody understand what Amendment Two is so that they'll vote yes on it.
John, do you have enough in your budget to handle that right now before you reimburse?
I'm going to get it, yep. Before it bounces.
And how long is that normally?
Right now, twenty-four hours.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Thank you for what you did.
Okay. Orders and resolutions.
I'll take them. Okay, motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Being opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Rocky. Okay, orders and resolutions. First is a resolution authorizing agreement with the DeKalb County Commission to assist in providing transportation to citizens.
This is something we do every year, that we agree to give them ten thousand two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. That money goes to help offset the cost of a driver of one county's transportation buses.
So move?
Second.
Motion for Walter, second for Grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Being opposed. Motion carried. Next is a resolution, rescinding resolution and amendment resolution adding event pay for police officers and firefighters. What this is, is we basically, I think it was last meeting, we passed the policy where the police officers would get event pay for, you know, certain events and everything. And we had talked at the time when we passed that, that eventually we'd like to add, you know, the firefighters to this list as well. But we didn't have the details. Well, the committee, Grant and I met with Chief Fisher and come to find out there was really nothing different about their situation than the police. It's just that I think they have five, I gave you guys a copy or some of you. But basically, all we're doing is we're saying that the fire would get the same benefits the police.
Well, now, wait a minute, Dana. Now, what this is, the resolution twenty-six to twenty-eight is rescinding. And that's where you try and remove the natural disaster, right?
Right. What we're doing is rescinding the last amendment and adding this amendment.
And you're taking off the natural disaster out of the...
Right. And adding the firefighters.
Well, I believe, I believe that's exactly what we don't need to do, is take off natural disaster. Because that's when you need all hands on deck. If we have a tornado, if we have some kind of natural disaster, that's when you're going to need everyone. And I think that it would be real simple, that we could do away with both of these event pay resolutions. And treat our city policemen and firemen just like we do all of our other city employees. And anytime they're required to come in on their off day, anytime they're required to work overtime, we do away with a hundred-and-twenty-nine hours in a three-week period. We do away with that. And anytime that they're required to come in and work overtime, work extra, then they are treated like every other city employee that get diving hives, get overtime. And that way, we'll do away with all this event stuff. There won't be any need for the event pay because they're going to get it. And they'll be treated like the street department, sanitation, rec, and everybody else. Won't be treated any different.
And just deal away with the policy that we passed a few years ago?
Deal away with it and just, just do away with the hundred-and-twenty-nine hour every three weeks deal. Be done with that and treat them just like we do everyone else on overtime. And that's the way we do all the other, and what, a hundred-and-fifty employees or whatever it is.
Well, of course, they are all based on forty-hour week. And I don't know what it would mean when you got, maybe one policeman works forty-eight hours one week and thirty-six the next.
But if he worked fifty hours in that week where he had ordinarily scheduled to work forty-eight, then he would automatically receive two hours overtime.
What do we do on the weeks where he just works thirty-six?
Then he wouldn't receive any overtime.
You know, that's precisely the reason that the labor laws allow cities to do that for forty-eight-hour employees and, I mean, twenty-four, twelve hours because the odd way they do shifts, you know, these long shifts and they just, you know...
That's exactly right. But the labor law says that we have to pay overtime if a person works, police officer works overtime, if he works more than a hundred-and-twenty-nine hours in a three-week period. It doesn't say that if he works a hundred-and-twenty-one hours, we can't pay him overtime. It doesn't say that. But it says we have to pay anything over a hundred-and-twenty-nine hours in a three-week period. And we could do away with that and just pay them like we do all of our regular employees.
And then if you do away with it, if they have a forty-hour week, you've got to pay them overtime for that last eight hours?
If, well, they're normal scheduled hours. Anytime they work over and above, they're normal scheduled hours.
You do away with treating them under the hundred-and-twenty-nine part of the statute. And you say you're going to treat them like everybody else. And if they have a forty-eight-hour week, they got forty hours regular time and eight hours overtime.
Which is why, you know, we went through about a six-month-long grooming process to get our personnel policy for this type of thing. Because the way these guys work with the twelve and twenty-four-hour shifts, it just, it was eating itself in overtime. So what we decided to do was to settle at the hundred-and-twenty-nine and the two-hundred-and-twelve for the fire. And then we gave them all the dollar fifty to raise to kind of help offset some... And then we gave them all the dollar fifty to raise to kind of help offset some of that stuff. And now we're trying to go back and, and ensure that, that they're gonna get overtime for most all this stuff anyway by doing, by, by, you know, doing the event pay, so, I mean.
Well, taking natural disaster out of it is exactly the wrong thing to do.
When we had our meeting, what we decided was that, you know, we all felt like that, that that would be done on a case-by-case basis. Matter of fact, the scenario that we, that we had in our meeting with the chief was that, you know, because we can't foresee everything. And if something comes up like a storm or hurricane or whatever, and, you know, he, he can come before the council and say, look, we had this natural disaster last week. And I'd like to request that, that the guys get, get event paid for this particular event, then we can do it on a case-by-case basis, but, I mean.
The chances are, if we have a natural disaster, fate was gonna reimburse us anyway, so I mean, I don't, well, what's the point taking it out?
But the whole idea was, was to try to, these things that we mandated, we say, guys, we're gonna have a parade, you gotta work, okay? But they, they know if you have a natural disaster, that they're automatically going to, whatever it takes to make it work. So it's not, it's not an event pay, it's, it's natural disaster, so that's common. Because it's common, it don't need to be in there, it's just something that we do. It's not, it's not mandated that we say we're gonna have a parade. If, if there's a natural disaster, these guys going to work, we think about, and they need overtime?
Well, surely they're gonna work, but I don't see the point in taking it out, but I would like to say that pretty, just like, anytime that they are called in or have to work above and beyond their normal duty hours, then they're compensated for it.
Uh, well, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, at this point in time, if we're gonna, if we're gonna try to revamp this whole thing, I think we need to let the next group decide how they're gonna do it. I mean, we don't need to come in and start, I mean, we did this for purpose.
Yeah, we're kind of unraveling, so it's, it's, I mean, right now with these guys saying we want event pay, so we're trying to just, to give them something.
But if we're gonna change the whole thing, then that's like taking a dollar and fifty cents back, if you're gonna reverse it all, let's take.
I don't want to take anything back from them, I want to ensure that they're getting compensated for the hours they work.
Let's, 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 let's open that up in another discussion and let's, let's try to handle this part about event pay now, that we're saying, if they, if we mandate that they come in, then we should pay them. That, but, but natural disaster, that's just automatic, you know, if, if something happened where God, there's a tornado or something, they're gonna go, get to work before we even think about overtime. They're not gonna think about overtime, but when it comes up, that's, that's just natural overtime, should be. And that's what we talked about, you know, they, you know, chief would come in and say, hey, you know, we had this natural disaster last week, we had all these guys working. I'd like to request that our guys get, you know, time and a half for that, and we can say. And if we take event pay off, I would hope that natural disaster would always be something that's considered. We need you to come in, everybody chip in and do it, so it's, it's kind of two separate subject matters. I think one should be, if somebody tried to take away the event pay later down the road, then natural disaster is not tied to it. Natural disaster is something that, these guys are coming in, they're gonna get paid for it, because it's something that happens that we don't. We're not saying that you, we're not, by taking it off, we're not saying, guys, we're not gonna pay you time and a half for this, it's just, it's not an event.
I understand it, well, yeah, if a tornado is, is right.
We're gonna pay a time and a half.
It's not an event like a boom day or a Monday or a third Saturday, so that's what we're trying to say, it's not that type of event.
And I, I would think that they would get time and a half for that event, I mean, for that disaster. But that'd just be done, hey, we had a tornado last week.
Through the normal process, or you're saying, yeah, let's include.
Yeah, but it's not an event, this is called event pay, so that's the reason we decided to take it out. But as far as abandoned, then the personnel policy that we put in place, I mean, that's a whole different.
I see.
What you're actually saying is that Randy or, or Don or whoever would come to you and say, well, we recommend we pay overtime for.
For this unforeseen event, the disaster that took place, right, then council could vote on it at that time. If you have a natural disaster, you're probably gonna get past the hundred and twenty-nine.
Exactly, yeah.
So you won't have to say anything, that just, that winds up with it. And so this, this whole discussion was really about boom days, is that correct, guys, boom days, all these events that we have and the officers come in and, and we say, we, you got to work the hundred and twenty-nine. So we're saying, ah, that may not be right, let's, let's go back where every time we say, you gotta come in, we're just saying, we're gonna, this is an event that we say we're gonna have, and we're gonna do it. And I think natural disasters will even have more weight on them than these events will, if something like that happened, that these guys are rest assured that this overtime's gonna be given, because we appreciate everybody coming out, don't worry about that, just take care of the, the citizens that's out there. And then when these guys turn in their report, that's just a done deal. I would hope nobody would sit in this, in these chairs and say, we ain't paying them for that, you know, that's, it's kind of separate, in my mind, so. And really tonight, you know, we, all this has already been done for the police back the last time we passed it. You know, all we're, all we're doing tonight is adding the firefighters to that, you know, so. My concern, my concern about that too, when I, when I think about policing, and I appreciate the fire, when I think about the police, when I think about, if we have a big crowd, we're gonna need somebody in to make sure that the crowd stays contained. Now, I, I don't really know, because we, we were talking about fire, but I don't really know how fire would assist something in emergencies or, they're definitely not putting out fire.
Medical.
Medical, the medical side of it, so however many people or it needs to do that, I just don't understand the logic.
It don't take as many firefighters.
It don't take as many.
As it does for crowd control, no?
Right.
There's still need there for the medical reasons.
Right.
We always have some kind of medical emergency in any of these events.
So, so this, this discussion is around that, then, then you guys have to say, understanding that we're budgeting, trying to get, how many people can we get by with doing this? And not use it as something to say, hey, guys, come on, there's overtime, let's get it.
We limit that, that gets enough, we know, for each event, we've got certain numbers that we use. If this, once we get this and we appreciate it, you do, it's not so we can add more people to it, it'll be the same amount, it's always done.
Right.
It's just reimbursing them for their time. It's not coming in on Fourth of July for fireworks, somebody's gonna come and wave at their family to be there to help the city. And then if they don't get overtime for it, it's not right.
Right, well, I don't know how far this can trickle down, but I'd like to make a motion that we, this event pay is right, I think we should do it. I hope that, that you guys will help us determine the amount of people who need that to keep it and set that in stone. So I'll make the motion that we pass.
I'll say it.
Motion for Walter, second for Red, all those in favor?
Aye.
We appreciate you taking the good.
Motion carried. Good discussion, okay. Next is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter into an agreement for a flashing beacon light in downtown Port Payne.
Is that like a bat light?
Crosswalk light, that flashing lights, it's, it's working today, right?
Yes, it is. It's working, but I tell you what, the cars blow right by it.
We need some patrolmen down there for a while.
Be careful what you wish for.
We also talked about putting a, a cone in the middle of the road till everybody gets kind of accustomed to it, so we may do that. But the reason for this is that this paperwork, I guess, should have been done a long time ago, but the Alda guy forgot it. So now he's asking for it, and it basically says that we install it, we maintain it, that's about what it amounts to. Okay, any more discussion?
I'm gonna, I'm making a motion, we adopt that resolution.
Motion from Randall, second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah, I just, I just happened to be down in town today and was kind of watching it. And watched a log truck or some kind of big truck just hammer right by, it was flashing, people standing there.
Never checked it.
Never checked it. So, you know, they'll get used to it being there, I guess.
Okay, next we have a exception lowest bid, responsible bid for sewer rehab work in the northwest part of town.
This is for the next phase of the sewer rehab project that's been going on, open bids today. James Payton reviewed those bids, this little pack that I passed out, this is a letter of recommendation to accept the low bid, which was in fact the lowest responsible bidder. So all we need is a motion to say.
Move. Motion for Walter. Second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, Mr. Curdo Daniels to discuss a recent letter received from A.D.M. regarding the city-owned building pad located at Ferguson.
A mayor called, said we've got a left A.D.M., they were wanting to see if a permit, a little shorewater permit for that industrial pad in the south of the valley. I called and talked to A.D.M. and talked them out of the permit, as if we could just go ahead and either gravel the side or grass the side. Discussing, you know, it's gonna be a lot cheaper to do grass than just graveling. But, you know, the grass is gonna grow and it could grow on it already, so we're gonna have to put a little bit of topsoil across the top of it. Does the city handle it? It's not really the ideal way to do it, to get the ten, you know, all A.D.M.'s asking us for right now, since they let us out of the permit, the, the, the permit, was to send pictures, looks we had a hydro seeder grass or mulched across the top of the pad.
Are they asking us to cover the entire pad?
Yes.
He knows you're with home A.D. and all the time.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's really not any runoff making it to the creek, I mean, it's all grass, unless it's been bush hogged lately. Last time I was there, it was about thirty inches, three foot tall, all the way like truly bush hogged it was. But it's still not making it to the creek. You know, we need to get more topsoil, maybe instead of hauling topsoil, we go down there and strip a little more topsoil beside it, instead of getting to a little haul or something. Or we're gonna be grassing the month, we're gonna be grassing the area as well.
This is just another example, A.D.M.
I'm sorry, we need to, we got out of the permit process, which I would say was probably about a forty thousand dollar savings.
I see grass.
Kurt, what, what's your timeline on this, if we have to move by A.D.M.?
I asked for an extension, because when I came to talk to you, you wanted me to come to the council meeting, so I asked for an extension and I, I came to update the bar after this meeting. And just tell them what our intentions were, and then they want us to take pictures after it's grassed and mulched, and send the pictures to us. So I don't know if that made me. As long as they have us in the end.
Is it, is this something Tim can just do, or, I mean, we have to hire somebody?
See, water department, when Kurt came to talk to me, I think the wife was in there, they rebarred it.
No.
They offered water department to do it, to, you know, maybe haul a little soil in and do it, because they've got the hydro seeder, and later they told me the Tim had one, so.
You got Tim with the hydro seeder, right?
We turned the fire truck that they gave us, the fire department, into a hydro seeder, yeah.
So what we're gonna do, put the topsoil on it, do we have to do it? We, we're gonna do it.
Yeah, we can get it from there. We got one pile left, I think, down there, that y'all never hauled off. And then, I would just strip that, run a little beside it, and do a little more topsoil, I mean, I wouldn't put.
I say go.
And there's no grow weeds, so we're looking.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I just think, go, let's do it.
Thank you, Kurt.
Absolutely. Appreciate you.
I'm making a motion, tell Tim, would you please do that, Tim? Make a motion if you would take care of that, please. Motion for Walter, second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Activity permits, Port Payne Chamber of Commerce Halloween block party. Authorized renewal of slow and ice agreement with Alda.
This is the, the thing we do every, you have.
So move.
Motion from Red, second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce Halloween block party, Chamber of Commerce Christmas parade.
Good, good.
Motion to approve both.
Second. Motion from Randall, second from Walter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, streetlight request, Tommy Hicks.
Mr. Hicks has requested two lights go on Portabel Road, two really dark spots up there, have no problem with any of them.
They got both of them there?
Yes.
And it is dark?
Yes.
Right up there the other day, now one of them is on Portabel and one of them's on sixty-seventh.
Both of the two I looked at were on Portabel. Now, I, and unless he made a separate thing that I didn't see.
Now, there's one here on sixty-seventh street, and it's also dark down towards the creek.
By that bridge, yeah, it's extremely dark.
Very dark, I made, made a motion, we approve both of them.
Motion from Red, second, from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Now wastewater treatment plant project is, as far as the paperwork is concerned, is going well, pretty well. We've been tentatively granted one point one million dollars in loan, state revolving fund loans. I think that, uh, Payton said that it would probably be thirty days before we'd get the final approval and actually get the money, but that's, that's in the works. As far as the dozer that the sanitation department had been trying to buy, I don't think it's been released yet. We just keep waiting, but we are definitely the first on the list if they do release it. The old hospital, we had a meeting with EPA and Tarkov over a conference call, we never could get together, the EPA office in Atlanta. It appears that they're going to, to treat this as a brownfield site, which will allow us to apply for a substantial grant for demolition. There's some stipulations that have to be done first, first of all, it's got to be a phase one study done. And Lucas is talking with A.D.M. to see if they will agree to, to do it at no cost. Once that's done, then they require phase two study. But once the, before the phase two study can be done, we have to assume ownership of the product. And they will not even talk to us about grants until we own the product. So, we just got to step, take us one step at a time, and if we can get the phase one done to determine how much asbestos is in there as well as the contamination due to the fuel tanks that's in the ground, then we'll know which way to go from that point on. But once we do assume ownership, if we do, we've got to secure the place, and that's where some money's got to be spent. We could put fencing around it, we gotta do something, because from a liability standpoint, it'd be very similar to the Cobble building. We've got to get, keep people out of it. So as soon as I hear something, I'll be back in touch with everybody, I'm not gonna get that ridiculous.
Any ideas how much it would take for us to assume responsibilities for it?
Well, actually, I guess it, uh, Rocky had to answer that question, there's, there's some back taxes on it, about thirty-five thousand dollars back taxes.
Thirty-five thousand dollars in back taxes, did the state buy them? We haven't looked at that in a while, but last time we talked to the bank, basically, they wanted us to rip, to pay them the back taxes and then take it, give you. And that's what they, and I have my recollection for that. Basically, that's correct. And closing costs, of course, which. Yeah, and closing costs, I don't have the closing cost on that, we were paying back taxes, prepared D.
I meant to ask you, Rocky, is there a way that the state ever waives the back taxes on a problem like that if a city entity is buying it?
Can't hurt to ask.
No, was there the problem was, I don't know if there is, never.
And we'll try.
But we can ask.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be nice if we could.
Given that, yeah, there may be some way to do it or to get the state to offset it or something.
I think that's all I've got.
Are you on personnel?
Are you on personnel, let me just interject something we talked about, and I like to see over, over my tenure here, I think I ran into a lot of cases where we needed someone that had experience in H.R. in, in the city, some of the things that I was actually doing, I didn't have the, I wasn't qualified to answer the question. Some of the, some of the things that may come up, as, as the rules get stricter, I want to be sure that our department heads even know exactly what they have to do. I don't want them to get in trouble or get sued, so I think H.R. is someone that understands the legal ramifications, probably up to the term, they're right, I don't know. We had somebody that, that would do things, help us to have our policy, when you talked about things like, I know there's a lot of racial tensions in the land, you know, we definitely don't want any, if our department head is doing something that will get them in trouble, or anything that involved sexual harassment, you know, there's, we just don't have that. And I think we need someone to train and make sure our employees, our department heads are well-versed in how to deal with that. So we're just kind of taking the, now saying, we kind of think. So we're just kind of taking it now, saying, we kind of think that they are, well, I'd like for us to know that they are. And having someone here that's well-versed in H.R., I think it actually helps relax the mind of the council, so, I mean, the guys are running now, because sometimes you get asked questions, "We're not professionals, we don't know." So, having someone there. So I, I like to, for the group to think about that, and maybe start looking, looking around, Mayor, to see if there's someone that's, that is strong, we need, we need strong, someone strong, and someone that understands that, and how it works, and maybe we could look at bringing someone in to help.
We can ask around, of course.
Yes, please, let's, we just made the action. I've already, I've already been in touch with some, some H.R. folks, some H.R. professionals, been in for a long time, and they've given me some recommendations as far as what kind of experience we'd be looking, what we need to look for based on the number of employees we have, and what I was told, with two hundred employees, by all means, we should have an H.R. person.
Right.
I've also had a couple of those H.R. folks volunteer to be on interview panels, because they know the business. One of them's been in over twenty-four years, the other one, I think, close to fifteen years, and they've offered their help to help us take this step into something that we've not ever done before. So, I've got some information for you, Mayor, that, that I can pass on to you, and I think, I agree with Walter, I think this is something that we really need to look at. Times are changed, you know, we're, this is not the same country it used to be, and things are just not the same as they used to be, and I think we need to, to have somebody on board who, who knows the, the current laws, and what you can do and what you can't do, and I think it's only, only smart that we do that. I think we have a, we have at least two new council members, I'd like to give that gift